It is seven o'clock on Monday, March 2nd, and we'll call our city commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Bossis-Raff? Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Talentino?
Here.
Commissioner Torrey?
Here.
Commissioner Bossis-Raff reached out to us and let us know that she would not be able to make it tonight. Is there a motion to excuse?
No motion.
Second. Been moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand, please. Thank you. I am number four under Mayor's comments and general announcements. I have none, but I would like to express our sincere condolences to the family of Steve Gleason. He was a longtime banker in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, longtime community volunteer, and recently was a member of our EDC. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to you. Item B, proclamations and recognitions. Tonight in the audience, we have David Bray and Tim McConkey. If you would come forward. Is Roland either or anybody else here? We have a proclamation to present you, and it's declaring Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, as National Service Recognition Day for the city of Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan. Whereas United Way of the Eastern Upper Peninsula sponsors both the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program and the Americor Projects. And whereas the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program serves three eastern upper peninsula counties, Chippewa, Lewson, Mapano, it invites adults 55 and over to improve the lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic engagement through service and volunteering. And whereas Americor members organize the Safe Routes to Health Program administered by the Michigan Fitness Foundation. And whereas the Chippewa County-based Safe Routes to Health Program is aimed at connecting citizens to health, wellness, and physical activities by using a multi-generational approach. And whereas national service organizations, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program and Americor Priority addresses the most pressing challenges facing our community, from early literacy to the promotion of older, healthy Americans. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Donald J. Gary, Jr., Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, as National Service Recognition Day for the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. So, thank you very much. And if you'd like to say a few words?
Volunteering is very important in our community, and I highly recommend everybody get out and make a difference. It does so much. The Retired, Senior, and Volunteer Program is amazing. It helps with the literacy of our children at an early age. It catches them before they can fall through the cracks. Thank you.
I agree with what you said. Thank you. Thank you. And moving on into item C, public comments. Would any of the members of the audience like to make any comments on any of the agenda items tonight? If you'd give us your name and the agenda items, please. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Any others? Yes, sir. Anymore? Yes, sir. Anymore? All right, thank you. Moving on to item D, the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Under the consent agenda, one, approval of city commission meeting minutes of February 17, 2020. Item two, approval of city commission meeting minutes of February 24, 2020. Item three, acceptance of the Downtown Development Authority meeting minutes for November 13, 2019, December 11, 2019, January 22, 2020, and February 12, 2020. Item four, from the Ordinance Evaluation Committee, first reading of an ordinance enacting to repeal of various provisions of the Code of Ordinances. Item five is also from the Ordinance Evaluation Committee, first reading of an ordinance enacting the repeal of Chapter 25, Article 3, vegetation of the Code of Ordinances. Item six, annual guideline resolution for 2020 poverty exemption. Item seven, confirmation of the vacation of Henry Street, Henry W. Seymour's addition. And item eight is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Is there any commissioner that would like any of the items further explained or removed from the consent agenda for further consideration? Commissioner Torrey?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Supporter? It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Item E, special orders of business, there are none. Moving into item F, communications. City Manager.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a project update from the committee that's seeking out the splash pad. We've uploaded a PowerPoint and the agenda software system. I believe it'll show up on the TV as well. So, we'll turn the mic over to Lisa Young, right?
I'm Amanda Tonight.
Amanda, sorry.
That's all right.
I'll remember.
Mostly both of us together, mostly. So, I am Amanda Tonight, and I'm part of the Splash Pad Committee. These are... One of my daughters is up there, but lots of the kids that you see in the seats and children of our committee members. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. We are a group of volunteers. We are learning as we go, but we are being very deliberate and thoughtful with all of the things that we are considering. I thank you again for letting us present. Last you saw us was about eight months ago. And this might take you back, this little video. Well, my video's not gonna play, which is really disappointing. But it was a drone video at the whole project playground campus. So, in the audience, you'll see Lisa Young. You'll see Michelle Callahan. Commissioner Jody Bossis-Raff is also on our committee. She's ill. Ellie Hubbard and Tiffany Usherich are two other moms who round out our group. We all bring something different to the table, but what we all bring is a passion for having more for our kids in our city. We've worked a lot of hours to try to pull together some really great information for you guys to consider. We feel that our community could use a few family strengthening activities, something that can cross generations, but won't to the very, very young. A safe option with no standing water, since occasionally our area waterfront access is limited due to contamination and other factors. Anytime outdoor activity can be encouraged, we're for it. So, our project playground location is easily accessible to the bike path, baseball fields, and the sunshine. All abilities can enjoy a splash pad. Anybody with mobility issues, sensory issues, all of those things are included in the people that can use a splash pad effectively. We're excited that a splash pad here would keep families local with no travel to St. Ignace or Ontario. So, last you saw us was eight months ago, July 1st, 2018. You gave us unanimous conceptual approval for our Malcolm Park location and permission to fundraise. So, we have been on that mission since. In the summer of 2019, you saw us at Downtown Days, Sub Day, collaborating with Buffalo Wild Wings and Coles. This fall, you've seen us at the Kevin Fever Hockey Tournament. We've discussed entrance into our capital improvement plan through Parks and Rec with Dan Wires. This December was our first big, exciting donation through the 2% funds right to the city through Sioux Tribe. That was $10,800. We've also experienced lots of other big donations coming in more recently through the Chippewa County Community Foundation and Yak, $8,000. And very excitedly, at our schools, we've run one pilot program of a drop-in-the-bucket challenge, which was a coin drive to collect even pennies from the kids who want to see this happen. We pulled in $866 from that fundraiser. We're really excited that the kids got to contribute to that. Our total donation amount is actually a little bit more than that now as more funds have been rolling in. I think Debbie handed out some of our donor list of the monies that have been coming in in the last few weeks. We had mentioned... Or we had met with Brian Chapman earlier this month, or actually in February, to discuss our funding. And that's all cash on hand, so that's exciting. So, the commission-approved location was the campus of Project Playground, and that's not a stellar picture, but... This is an aerial map. To the bottom left, you can see the existing playground. To the right, near the sidewalks, is the proposed location for the Rotary Bathroom Project. And right between is the proposed location for our project playground... Or for our splash pad. It's about 2,000 square feet, approximately 40 by 50 feet. It fits in nicely there. Close access to the bathrooms, not too close to the parking lot, just right. This is a city-owned property. It is a safe area. It has pavilion access. The Rotary Bathroom Project is also underway. Easily accessed by the bike path. And importantly to us, it's accessible to all incomes and abilities. Any project with grant funding through the one I'm gonna propose to you later has to be ADA compliant, and so it would fit that criteria. And there's something for all up there, hopefully, in the future if they choose to relocate the skate park. That would be something for all ages. So, last we talked, we had quite a large budget with a recirculation unit for our splash pad. After much deliberation, consideration, and many talks with the water play companies and our water department, that was Jim Rowe before he retired. We were able to sequence down the water usage and consumption to be much more conservative with it. And we're able to consider a flow-through unit. This doesn't require any chemical balancing, no daily checks. A much simpler and more maintenance-free type of pad. So, that's something I wanna really emphasize to you, that we scaled back the project. We really thoughtfully considered what this would be requiring of our city departments and found a much easier option. Our updated design concept is pretty. We really, really like it, and we're very excited that it's changed a bit. As you can see, it's accessible for all abilities and all ages. A couple different views. For anyone watching online, they'll be able to get a good picture here. So, our revised construction budget is $180,000. The actual parts of the splash pad, including the above-ground features, like that turtle you saw, the spinning umbrella, the butterfly, total $65,000. The installation costs are $55,000 from Vortex, which is our preferred company. They have the best warranties. They have the most experience with over 1,000 splash pads in Canada. And we highlight that because of the climate that Canada has. It's closest to ours. It's cold. But they have like 7,500 splash pads in the US and Canada. So, successfully can be done in the winter climates. The other installation costs that we are considering are excavation fills, cement work, electricity, and engineering. We have reached out to a few local contractors and have pending donations with them. They're just looking for a little bit more information once we can collaborate more with the city. So, we come to you with our fundraising information. Our immediate needs and why I'm here tonight is to talk about the DNR Recreation Passport Grant. This grant requires 25% of your total project cost as a... To be able to apply for the grant. That application is due April 1st and could potentially award $150,000. Now, after April 1st, there's a period of time where they have a chance to ask for more information, ask questions, make site visits, et cetera. If we are scored highly enough, we'll be placed on a list in December and have project agreement signed in January if we are one of the winners. It is a competitive grant. Additionally, our future goal is to raise $80,000. Once we have that amount, we could begin a patronicity or MEDC crowdfunding grant where we would seek out $50,000 from donations in our community, and the MEDC would match that amount. That... If there's an overage because we received both grants, we could make our design concept a little bit more elaborate. benches, shaded areas, splash pad features, and maintenance fund. So, when we get into maintenance and water costs, we calculated based on an 84-day season, which is 12 weeks, June, July, August. This would say that we were running... Or having our splash pad open for eight hours a day with sequencing and activation effect. Now, the activation effect is a child running up to the button, hitting the button, and turning on the splash pad. It would run for, say, six to eight minutes, turn off. And then if the child wanted to keep playing, it'd just hit it again, and it would come back on. However, with sequencing, that would mean a few of the features come on, and then they swap and different features come on. Kind of keep it exciting and playful. With all that calculated out, it's about 121 cubic feet. And at a commodity charge of $7.18 per cubic feet, it's around $87.35 per season. As far as future maintenance goes, we've discussed this a lot because I know it's a big concern, and we want it to be very deliberate and thoughtful. So, for a fee of $1,500, Vortex will assist with opening and winterizing your splash pad. Although we have chosen the simplest design for winterization, cities usually only require about one year of instruction, and then they've got it down. It's not a lot of removing of features. They suggest all the plastic features be removed to prevent them from crack... Cracks from winter. But other than that, the stainless steel and brass stuff above ground can stay in. They estimate it's about six hours of manpower. We have a checklist for opening. We have a checklist for closing and can forward that on to you whenever you're interested. Weekly checks would just be there to remove debris if any leaves, sticks, locks end up on the splash pad. It could just take minutes. The activator switch is probably the most broken item. I think it gets a lot of use. Kids are rough sometimes. And they estimate a three to four-year wear on it, but for budgeting purposes, I'll say we'll replace ours every two years. Those cost $500. Now, gaskets for the spinning features on the splash pad are around $15. Can be found at local hardware stores and can be replaced by department staff if... So, as to not have a Vortex call. And they... Those can wear out within about two years. The above-ground stuff, which is the exciting and pretty things, have a 25-year warranty. The seafloor pieces, like we talked about, were the plastic ones. The butterfly wings, the turtle little hands, are five-year warranties. So, with our water costs, I tried to be very conservative and kind of over-budget so you have an idea what a yearly operating plan would be. If we say $10,000 per year because we had a super-hot summer and everyone was using it lots, it'd be about $10,000. There would be an electricity charge, but we're told it's a low voltage and not generally a concern, excuse me, in the electricity area. $1,500 for a winterization fee. I think that would be a great idea to have them come teach us one time how to winterize. We can budget to replace that activator switch every other year, just in case. We'll say 16 hours of labor from the city water department for opening and winterizing and a mid-season check. And if five gaskets were to be injured every year, it'd be about $75 to replace those and five hours of labor for each one... Or for each, like one hour of labor for each gasket. So, our total budgeting cost is $11,825 and 21 hours of labor. A little bit more information about the DNR Recreation Passport Grant. It's specific to renovate and improve existing facilities at parks or development of new facilities or parks are eligible as well. The applicant must be a local unit of government. It's to provide public recreation opportunities and infrastructure to support public recreation activity. The applicant must own the site and must have an accessible design for people of all abilities and provide the public an adequate opportunity to review and comment on the proposed application. The minimum request amount is 7,500. The maximum is 150,000. It's a reimbursement program for actual expenses, including engineering permits and construction. The grantee must fund at least 25% of the total project cost. Match commitments must be provided by October 1st, and those can be in writing up until April 1st. But we have chosen to have those as cash on hand rather than in written commitments. And the grantee must begin the project within one year of the date the project agreement is signed. Generally, those are signed in January, and we would hope that they are signed in January of 2021. I have really, really dove into the grant and what is required. There's lots of information in it, lots of questions. But these are some of the things you could expect to see on there. So, now I'm asking for your support and collaboration. We have raised $25,000, but actually, that's more like $32,000 today towards the Splash Pad. We are requesting $25,000 from the Augusta Hersley Seal Estate Funds to secure a grant match and for any future grant matches as applicable. Like I said, for that patronicity grant, we'll need to have $80,000, so this would get us well on our way. And we also request the city's support for grant writing, which will eventually require a resolution of authorization, which I could come back for at a different commission meeting from you, the city commission. Couple more pictures of our kids and our contact information. Co-chairs, myself, and Lisa Young are happy to answer any of your questions. We welcome your questions, and we welcome any help you have to answer these questions. We feel like our project will be as loved as other projects in the past. And we've been encouraged to ask for the Seela State money as something so recreation-focused, so... I thank you for your time. And can I ask if you have any questions?
Thanks, Amanda. That was a nice presentation. And do you wanna go to the city manager first or to city commission comments? All right. Commissioner Collins?
So, if we actually are the ones writing the grant, who's gonna actually administer the project? I guess that's a question to Steve.
So, the... The grant has to go to the local unit of government, so we would be the ones administering it. So, the project would essentially turn over from the Splash Pad Committee into City Hall. So, we would have to administer it.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
I just wanna say, great job. I knew when you guys came back in July that there was no doubt that you guys were gonna reach your goal, and you blow my mind as far as how much you've raised in such a short period of time and tell the community support behind it. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Commissioner Miller?
That was a great presentation, thank you. I just have one question. You've estimated that the cost per year is $11,825 plus the... Who pays that?
City Manager?
Correct me if I'm wrong. The maintenance costs would be funded by the city, correct?
Correct. It'd be a city asset.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. You guys have a plan in place that you're going to be putting... Starting an endowment fund through the community foundation?
We have scaled that back because of the size of our project has greatly decreased and the maintenance of the project has greatly decreased. We're hoping to give a chunk of money from the patronicity campaign towards a maintenance fund.
To be put into an endowment that would then collect interest, right, in the community foundation?
It was discussed that way, but I think that it would be more beneficial to have that sum of money rather than wait each year for what's generated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins, you had a comment or question?
I guess I'm just... So, what's the total cost of the project, then, as far as to actually create it? We've got... I mean, you're going for a $150,000 grant, right?
Correct.
So, what's the total cost?
$180,000.
So, $180,000 is gonna be the cost of it. We would have to kick in $25,000.
From the Seela State Fund?
From the Seela State Fund. Administer the program or administrate, right?
The grant.
And then basically maintain it every year thereafter?
Correct.
At a cost of roughly $11,000 or $12,000 a year?
Plus labor.
Yeah. I guess just so everybody knows where I'm at. I know we're going through budget discussions and talks. I'm not in a position where I'm gonna authorize at least my vote for $25,000 to go towards a grant that we're going to be in a position where we're gonna have to administer this thing for how knows... Who knows how long for $12,000 per year? So, anyways, that's just where I'm at, just from a... I mean, I think it's a great concept. I love the idea of doing it. I think it's great for the community. From an expense standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me at this point until we actually start to go through the budgets because of where we are financially. That's just my opinion.
Thanks, Commissioner Collins. Thanks, Commissioner Collins. I think that's a good lead-in maybe to the comments that the city manager may have on the actual flow of how a transaction like this would work and- and what happens when the city actually has to get into, you know, if we were the recipient, we'd have to go through city contracting and- and bid requirements. And there are a lot of other steps, so maybe city manager could speak to some of that.
So if the commission chooses to go down this path, um, we would need two motions. We need a motion to authorize direct staff to do the grant, and we need a motion to set the money aside earmarked for the project. The internal workings of how the grant would work, we would spend the next thirty days getting the grant done. There would be a item on the agenda for the next commission meeting to have the public hearing. That'd be the March sixteenth meeting. Um, we would write the grant, we would compile everything, we would turn it in. Uh, we would sit until the October um, award announcements to be when that comes out. We would take in all the funds they've campaigned for, so we have that contribution on hand. Um, then the project would go through our internal bidding processes. You could authorize a sole source uh, request to waive the bidding process. Uh, otherwise, we'd have to open it up to other contractors. Um, so there's some concern from there. Um, and then we would have to manage, do all the reporting, oversee the construction and then close out the grant. So there would be a good amount of work that we would have to do. Um, there is some staff capacity concerns regarding this grant just because of the other um, grants that we do have currently active for um, moving forward, so. Anything else you have a question?
I think so. Uh, Commissioner Baker?
Now, as far as the funds in the Sioux Seal, they're specifically for recreation, right? They're not used for anything other than improving our parks and re-. So aside from the maintenance of the eleven thousand dollars, you know, that's what that money is there for, types of projects like this, right? So if realistically, if they work it out, if the Splash Pad Committee can work it out to where they can establish of that fund, that endowment fund through the community foundation for maintenance, would it be that big of a cost to us really?
Commissioner Collins?
So I think based on what I understand from the response to that question, they aren't gonna do that though. So they aren't gonna put money aside that's asking to pay for the expenses going forward. And then we're gonna have to pay basically the twelve thousand dollars plus the twenty-one man-hours that would be used going forward. And- and I don't know if this is something that should go in front of the Community Services Board or, I mean, literally, we have, you know, forty thousand dollars a year that we put inside that, um, give them to basically dole out to the community. So, and I guess in my opinion, you know, we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars, which may not seem like a lot to very many people. But to me, that's a lot of money to put towards something with also adding on to it another twelve thousand plus per year going forward, plus we have to administer it and- and so on and so forth. So to me, I just want to make sure that, I- I mean, if they came back and said, yeah, hey, look, we'll put the money aside and we can, you know, cover the maintenance going forward, then I'd probably be a little bit- be a little bit more at ease with that, if that makes sense.
Right.
I just have two comments about that.
Sure.
Um, we are open to ideas of what is required of a maintenance fund through the city of Sioux St. Marie. Please come to us with that. Everyone has asked us what our maintenance plan will be and- and it's not clear what everyone's looking for. So if you have any suggestions, please let us know what those are. And secondly, we did ask for um, the Community Services Board to please recognize our project in June. Um, we were given no funds and no vote during that meeting. They didn't vote on our project at all. They just said no.
I have a- just a couple of comments. Uh, you mentioned that we gave unanimous conceptual approval, which is right. I think it's a great project and you're a great committee and you're doing fantastic things. And I think that there was some guidance that was given to you maybe from this body. And uh, in your Sioux Splash Pad uh, information from September sixth uh, for our- our CIP uh, capital improvement plan process, uh, you had mentioned that you were going to go out for crowdsourcing, patronicity first. And then uh, after all of that was done, you were gonna make the request for seal funds. And uh, after the city had gone through its capital improvement plan process, I think the priority was given, and maybe the city manager can comment on this, but it was- it was uh, put into the plan and- and we all reviewed and approved the plan based on that priority. And uh, it was outlined for year three, and I think uh, that would be two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. And uh, then departments put priority on it and so on and so forth, so. I guess if uh, city manager would talk about that process a little bit. I think the uh, I think that the burden, you know, is on your uh, committee. And I think that's what we were looking for, that you'd come to us after more money had been raised um, for the seal funds. I think you've done a fantastic job, and it looks to me, if I do the rough math, you've probably got the twenty-five percent match in hand.
We're close.
For the- for that process, so.
The reason we had that patronicity campaign first when that proposal went out um, was because we didn't have a great grasp on the grant process. The DNR grant um, starts your project, the patronicity is meant to finish. So they want to come in at the end to help finish the project.
Sure.
So that's why the order is different now.
Okay. I don't know if city manager wants to uh, comment at all on the CFP process or the recommendations for the third year out or the priority of it or?
So the CIP was placing the staff with the project as a placeholder. We didn't re- give it a high priority because it wasn't a staff internal project. We had, it was an outside group, so it just fell to a lower prioritization for our funding on the CIP because it wasn't being staff-driven at the time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Right, sure, Commissioner Collins?
So according to the sheet that you guys just handed out, you've got forty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars right now. And twenty-five percent of a hundred and eighty thousand is forty-five thousand, so you really only need three thousand dollars.
Correct. Um, if you go back to our presentation from July, it was in there to that we planned to request fifty to seventy-five thousand from the Seal Estate Fund. So we did scale back our request as our project scaled back. Um, we would like that money as a cushion and as a um, Kickstarter for our further campaigns. Um, it is a competitive grant. If it- if we are not awarded money, we will reapply the next year, but we want to keep trying to earn the money as we go.
Commissioner Collins, you still have a floor?
I'm just- I'm just trying to follow. So basically, you've got the- the forty-two thousand dollars. So your three thousand is sort of the twenty-five percent match, which is what you're asking the twenty-five thousand dollars from us to make sure you have the twenty-five percent match. But now you're saying you really want the twenty-five thousand dollars plus the forty-two thousand you have just so that you have cushion. That kind of, can you explain that to them?
Because we'll need money for later grant applications too, as a requirement. Um, not trying to steal the money, I just-
I realize.
We- we're looking for that as like the city's contribution to the project.
I'm- I'll yield right now, I just don't-
And I- I welcome any help with uh, this, I'm a nurse, this isn't what I do every day. So I'm scared a lot about civil planning, but not everything, so please, please teach us. We- we really have tried to educate ourselves as best we can.
Are we- do we have anybody that's working, I mean, is there, like, to me, I think that- that's great and I love where you're going. But do we have, can we have somebody like from the city work with them or- or?
That would be wonderful.
Jim and Linda was helping out, but they both resigned and or retired. Um, so there's been a gap from the city side of it, just because we don't have the staff to be able to do the water or the engineering analysis. So Dan and I started working with you guys a month or so ago, and I think Dan's-
Dan's been in it since almost a year.
The whole time, so. So there was some sea assistance through the transitions that we're going through. It kind of fell through, but Dan's been there the whole time. So, but yeah, we can, now that we've got some on board, we can continue to work through this with them to make sure there's more coordination with their project and um, uh, the rotary bathroom project. I know there was some concerns about there because they were running too tight into the stubs that would come off of the main. We're gonna try and coordinate that. But yeah, we can be there more often for this project moving forward.
Commissioner Collins?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I'm- I'm in support of this. I just don't, for me, I just have to be able to wrap my head around exactly what you're asking for and what you're doing.
Sure.
So I need to see a more structured plan where I can actually see what the costs are gonna be for us going forward and how they're gonna be taken care of. Um, so I think basically that means working with administration so that we can have a better kind of a strategy going forward.
Okay.
So like when you were talking about the fact that you just want to have money for a cushion, right? That like, to me, that's like a cushion for what? If we're doing the grant application and that's what we're doing the- the twenty-five percent for, then what do you need a cushion for? And then, because you don't, you're not gonna be asking for more grants, right, for the same project?
The patronicity grant is the second grant we're going to apply for that requires eighty thousand dollars.
On top of the one eighty?
No. We, it, if we were successful in our patronicity campaign, it would be one hundred thousand dollars because we would have crowdfunded fifty. We would have been matched fifty from the MEDC. But they want to give funds to um, complete your project. So we would have to have the eighty, crowdfund the fifty and then be awarded fifty.
Okay, so am I the only one that's having a problem with this? Because like literally, like I'm a numbers guy, so I need to see that laid out, basically what you just said. And exactly what you need from us and how it's gonna be administered and- and so forth. So if you only need a hundred thousand now, the total project's a one eighty, right? Do you see where I'm getting at? Like I want to see a plan and a strategy and a structure that shows how much money we need, what you need done as we go. Step one, step two, step three.
Okay.
And then hopefully they can help you do that, right? Because you're a nurse.
Thanks, Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Baker? And then we'll go to the other staff.
Okay, so, the way I'm looking at this, one, we approve this as far as telling them to go fundraise. So we definitely have to figure out how we can make this work with them. With that said, I did, as far as the first time that you guys came, as far as the maintenance being taken care of through the endowment, if there is a way to get the maintenance covered, I think that's been alleviating a lot of the concern from the commission aspect of it. Um, as far as what I believe they're asking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, because the, where they're asking for this ten thousand dollars, this pledge that you'll see on the bottom, it's not coming due till the end of December. And they need that ten thousand to apply for the DNR grant. So basically, the city would be fronting that ten thousand dollars up through that Sioux Seal Fund to make the DNR grant possible. Um, so I think, you know, moving forward, as far as coming up with a plan, I think maintenance, in my opinion, is your biggest obstacle as far as figuring out the funding for that. Um, and I know the community foundation and tips that are handed over there, but um,
We are willing to- to do whatever we need to do for as far as maintenance funding goes. It was a very big amount of an endowment fund last time we talked because the recirculation system required so much maintenance, chemicals, manpower, like an hour a day. It was a lot. Um, this is a lot less maintenance, so we did scale back, so that's why it's different.
Thank you, we'll move over to Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I think a couple of my questions will answer, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Baker. What happened at the Community Service Board? I got- I got two different things from you. You said they didn't do anything, they didn't take a vote, they didn't do anything, and then you said they said no. So if you say no, then what had to take a vote? What happened?
Ten um, ten programs uh, presented. Nine of them were given votes as to yea or nay on the amount. Ours was just said, we don't consider you a program, and that was that. There was no vote on ours, it's in the minutes.
Okay. All right.
And there had been some-
I thought you said they said no, so they took a vote and said no to you?
They did not take a vote, they just each said no. And there was some confusion about the um, mission statement, which did include capital improvement projects.
Well, I wanted to know, I like this, I like this project.
Thank you.
Looking at your list, what people have been doing, I think this is wonderful. But I've got more questions tonight than I have answers to, so I think perhaps maybe we should, maybe the city should get together with your committee and work the two things out.
That'd be great.
I had as many questions as Commissioner Collins did, I was confused about the money. And I guess I didn't even look at the, I didn't look at the date here, the twelve thirty-one. The ten thousand dollars, I didn't even see the date on that, I thought you had that already.
We don't have the ten thousand dollars yet, that is a pledge, but we've been told that pledges should not count for our grant match.
Also, I would be impressed to vote yes on this project or no, knowing that we would be on the hook for twelve thousand dollars a year for maintenance. So perhaps we could get some of our questions answered.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Torri, you have a question, I think we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, well, just a few comments for the commission. Uh, a few concerns that I have that we all are aware of. Um, right now, we don't have a city engineer and right now, we don't have a department head for the water department. And we also have a twenty-one million dollar build grant that we're working on administering, plus two other full pages of grants that are not closed out yet that we just saw the copy for two weeks ago. Um, plus the parking lot grant that we are working on administering. And I didn't know you ladies that well. I didn't, when we, when you came here eight months ago and we said, go out and fundraise, I mean, I should have known that you guys would be, but I didn't. Um, so shame on me for saying, you know, at that moment in time, go full force ahead. Uh, because the way that we do our planning here, it's like years out. And three years ago, or two years ago, maybe three years ago, Commissioner Talentino put a goal on goal-setting for a walkway that we haven't even started yet. And I really feel that it's rude to take an active goal that's been placed in category one, um, which was rated really high within the community and just sort of ignore that goal that we all adopted and then just change our mind and move in another direction. So we have just, there's just a lot of details that I think that we as commissioners need to be aware of right now and our limited resources here at City Hall. Um, do I think that your project is amazing? Yes, and your committee is phenomenal. I didn't realize that you women were this detail-oriented. Your presentation was really, really, really great. But I, as a city, I think that we have more irons in the fire that we need to be concerned with like right at this moment. And I'm hesitant of um, taking twenty-five dollars, thousand dollars of seal funds right at this, this moment.
Thank you for the comments, Commissioner Talentino, you had your hand up.
For me, it's a, it's a, it's a timing issue. Um, kind of marrying what Commissioner Torri just said as far as kind of getting in line, you know, with some of the other projects that we have already passed and talked about. I know Commissioner Baker also wants to try to throw on there someday getting a board walk-up at Sherman Park. And that's where these seal funds could come into- into play on this. Um, I think maintenance is the biggest issue for me as a commissioner. We all know we have thirty-some parks inside the city of Sioux St. Marie. We're doing the best we can to maintain them at now with- with the staff that we have. I'll give you an example, Voyager Park now in the six-year CIP, we're looking at, looking to get a pond tubo to help in maintenance part of that. Well, I realize it's great that these volunteer groups get together and do this, but the maintenance after they've said, here you go, is a very, very big issue for me. Um, there's no sense in making more parks and different things if we can't maintain what we already have. So maintenance is a very large issue of mine. Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Thank you.
A lot of the questions you've had had to do with- with money and the community foundation have been asked at-
All right, you want to introduce yourself and let us know your capacity, please?
Yeah, Debbie Jones, and I'm the executive director of the Chippewa County Community Foundation.
Thank you.
And we're the fiscal agent for all the funds that have been raised. So to answer some of your questions, I'm going to ask you a question. Um, the twelve thousand for the maintenance, but ten thousand of that has to do with water. So my question would be, when the new rotary bathrooms go in, who's gonna pay for the water for the new rotary bathrooms? Um, the bathrooms that are already up at Malcolm Field, who pays for that? The water that comes from the I five hundred track, who pays for that? The water that comes down at Rotary Park, who pays for that water? The water from Yanni Osborne Park that, in the fish cleaning station, who pays for that? It is a city-owned asset, so you have ten thousand of it, that's just strictly water use. So where in the city budget do all the city assets right now that utilize water, who pays for that?
This isn't really a question and answer from that perspective, but- but I can guarantee you that the I five hundred committee pays for their water. And there are a lot of other uh, sources that pay for the water, so.
But for the other city assets, who pays for that water?
Well, you're talking apples and oranges a little bit, so let- let's get back on course to where we're talking about the project.
But I- I don't think this is talking about the project because you're concerned with the ten thousand dollar water bill for a city-owned asset.
Well, if you want me to answer the question, we go through a rigorous planning process before we do any projects. We also get a lot of community input. And part of the CIP process is what we do now. Uh, so when the city does a project like that, it has the support and the vetting of the community and the governing board. So what is happening here is a little bit of an anomaly, and I a hundred percent support this and I respect your efforts and I applaud them. But it's almost like it's circumventing the city's process on establishing another asset, something that will have some legacy- something that will have some legacy costs going forward. So I think that's where some of the commission concerns are. That everybody in town can't build a, a park and turn it over to the city, and then we have to maintain it forever, so.
Why weren't those concerns brought up then when you gave us?
They were.
No, you gave us the approval to have the city to, to use that asset and to go ahead with fundraising.
We did, and, and I think it's the opinion, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, that we'd like to see your fundraising efforts go farther than they are now, be, before we commit the seal estate funds, and also we have a lot of irons in the fire when it comes to the grant writing and the support. And when, when and if the DNR trust fund grant comes through, then it becomes a city project and, and it further commits city, so.
So it is difficult though, it, it kind of puts the committee in a tough position, cause you're telling us to go out and raise more money without a commitment that the city will follow through, so when individuals or businesses are giving money, what do we say to them when they ask the question?
Do you have the unanimous conceptual approval support of the city commission?
But what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
Moving on, Commissioner Baker? Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, so. I'm, I'm kind of frustrated here, and I understand we have irons in the fire. I understand that we've lost two major department heads. But with that said, we also knew that those two department heads were leaving when we gave them the conceptual approval. And I understand that those of you, some of you that voted for it, may not have thought that these women, these women would raise the money. We told them forty-five thousand is what they had to match, what they had to make before we would dip into the Sioux Seal. They're so close. And as far as, I'm not saying again that it has to be done this, this summer, they're, they're still going to have to fundraise quite a bit of money, but we gave them the green light. And now they've, they've followed through, and I feel like it is our job to follow through, and I understand that we don't have where we're at as far as the grant process and staff and whatnot, but I, I feel like we're kind of, um, kicking them, I don't want to say kicking them down, but I would be extremely frustrated if I were them and putting that much time, I mean, these are women that are taking time away from their work, their families and everything to do this, and we told them we would support it. And so we need to follow through and continue to support it and be willing to, you, you talk about Sioux Seal Funds and where the, where that money has gone over the years. And over all the thirty parks and wrecks, where that's gone, and there's a big issue there, so I really think that we need to be very diligent and supportive of these, uh, women in this committee. And really try to figure out a way to make it work to where they can apply for this grant, cause it is money that they are going to miss out on if we do not help them out. Um, and then it's, it, it, this will all be for waste. And I, and I totally agree as far as too many projects, we've talked about it, uh, and let's not ta, take on anymore. But we told them eight months ago, yes. And we knew eight months ago that our head of engineering and our head of water were leaving, and we still said yes, so I think we have to back up our word and, you know, move forward with the project and, and finding a way. I'm not saying that their way is perfect right now, but meeting somewhere in the middle to find it, to make it a feasible project.
Thanks, Commissioner Baker, and just to clarify. Uh, we did unanimously authorize a location on city property, and we authorized them to start official fundraising efforts. Those are the two yeses that we gave. Commissioner Miller?
Just to put it in perspective, for me, I voted, I voted yes, we voted unanimously. I don't think any vector does not support your program. But when you came to us eight months ago, nobody said we'd be on the hook for twelve thousand dollars a year. That was the one thing that we didn't, that was the one thing we didn't know. And when the committee said they were going to vote, we give them green light to fundraise, I knew they'd raise their money. People in this community, when they go out to put their mind to something, they get it done. But nobody said we'd be on the hook for twelve thousand dollars maintenance, Commissioner Baker.
Okay, it's been a lot of very good discussion and, and an excellent presentation and, and excellent movement so far. Does anybody have a motion they'd like to make, to put on the table? Okay, thank you very much for the information, we appreciate it. Good luck. I think you will get there. I have no doubt. And I apologize, my computer blacked out. Moving on to, uh, item G, business items. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first up, consideration of bid award for a twenty-twenty KM eight thousand asphalt hot box. This is a request from the Department of Public Works. There has been a bid process that we went through. We had a few bids come in, we were recommending going with the low bid, they meet all of our expects. So we look for a motion to approve the bid as presented, in the amount of not to exceed thirty-four thousand four hundred twenty-five.
Thank you, city manager. So one motion, is there, are there any questions or comments from the, uh, commission? Commissioner Talentino?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for the purchase of a KM eight thousand asphalt hot box, including options one through five, from Alton Equipment Company of Traverse City, Michigan, for the cost of thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Miller?
Were there any other bids? I'm sorry, um. Yes, there were. There was a total of, I believe, four bids. Let me just pull it up here real quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, there was four bids total, the recommended bid amount. Yeah, this is the low bid.
Commissioner Miller, you still have the floor?
Thank you.
And I'm sure nobody will contest the need for a machine that will help us fill bottles. So it's been moved and supported, we give a roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes. Motion passed, thank you very much. Under G, business items, number two, city manager.
I got it. I'm a pro. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for consideration is a request to rezone the former Garfield site from B one to RM two by the property owner. This request is coming at a, at the heels of a project. We are asking the request to go through, uh, regardless of any potential future use or future project. This is more, stamp used it as a correction from a previous, previous rezone. Um, sitting back in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, somewhere around there, fourteen. We feel it is in the best interest of the city to rezone it from B one to RM two. As I mentioned, this project is coming in at the request of a project, but regardless of the project, we feel this is the right, uh, designation for the property to have, and would help us market moving forward. Regardless of the outcome moving forward.
So to reiterate, this is a zoning request. Uh, back to the original zoning that the property was in before, um, the current owner had, uh, I guess had a, uh, pretty nice, uh, project planned. And, uh, so this is a request from Mrs. Corbier, and this has nothing to do with a potential project. This has to do with a, a land use, so Commissioner Collins?
I just wanted to make a motion.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Thank you.
Yes, that's great. Okay, Commissioner Miller?
Okay, this request comes from, um, Corbier, it hasn't come from the community housing network. In here it says, community housing network.
City manager?
Correct, there is mention of the future project, but it's coming at the property owner's request. And like I said, the use of the project when looking at a rezoning request isn't really supposed to be brought up, um, like I mentioned, regardless of the request or regardless of the next item on the agenda. Staff and ICE support the switching from B one to RM two. And we feel this is the right designation to help move this project forward regardless. We are looking at this as a sole issue in that part of a future discussion which will come. That is why we are looking to rezone it from B one to RM two.
And just for, uh, claritate, clarification, I think, for the audience and maybe for the commission, could you outline what uses, uh, could be used presently if this zoning is not changed? And what, uh, uses, uh, the zoning would, uh, refer to?
I am going to defer that to my community development director, Kelly Freeman. He's going to help me out with that, so. Uh, as he's coming up here, B one is your general business, I mean, any kind of commercial in there, you can look at. Gas stations, stores, a lot of different stuff. The original intent, when you switch from that, uh, part of the project that was proposed at the time was a mixed-use type of development. Kelly, go ahead, answer the question.
Correct, back in two thousand fourteen, um, when Ms. Corbier purchased the property, she had some small commercial uses that she intended to uh, initiate and renovate the property for. And as part of that, the city commission approved a rezoning from RM two to B one. Uh, due to some health issues in Ms. Corbier's experience, those uh, plans are not moving forward, so she's basically asking to undo that in two thousand fourteen, zoning change. Uh, in B one, I don't have the full list in front of me, but you can do things like restaurants, personal service establishments, uh, medical and professional office type uses. Uh, those are uses that are non-residential in nature, of course, and are not permitted in RM two, which is where the request is, would be to move it to. Uh, there are some non-residential uses that are permitted in RM two, but there are things like nursing homes, funeral homes, uh, cultural facilities like museums and playhouses and things of that nature, and of course, uh, things like schools. So it's a lower intensity zoning designation than, than the current.
Thanks, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly while he's up here? And then we had, uh, five, uh, members of the audience that had questions, and they had said either on two or three, and I apologize, I didn't write down specifically which, so Sarah Cersei, did you have a question on this one, or was it the next? Or comments? Comments, okay. If you'd like to come to the microphone, you have up to three minutes.
Oh, no. Okay. Pardon me, I've never done anything like this.
If, if you give your name, please, for the record.
Uh, Sarah Cersei?
Thank you.
My current address is five three five East Screw. I live literally directly across the street. I spoke last week, I think it was, I was here, so if you were here, sorry. I have no issue with the rezoning in and of itself. My issue is with the, um, zoning variances that they request. Um, my understanding as a homeowner, as a taxpayer, is that zoning laws are seen as a contract between myself and the city. As, myself as the property buyer. Asking for a variance is no different to, to me than asking for a favor. I think that granting such a favor breaks the contract between the city and the property buyer, myself. And it takes that protection away that I was granted by those zoning ordinances when I bought my house. Asking for the proposed variances, um, prove that there's not enough space for this project at the desired location. And I don't feel, I just get concerned about if we say, yes, these people can have these variances. It's cool here. What about all these other people? If you give it to one person, how do you tell the next person no? Because you already told someone yes, so you put that statue up for them. And I just want, where do you draw the line? If you say, okay, we'll do this here, but we're not going to do this here, why is it okay in one situation, but potentially not another? Also, I would have never friggin' bought my house if I knew this was potentially going across the street from me. Ever. That's probably all I have to say on this one.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Good comments. Uh, Debbie Jones? Do your comments run to as well? Awesome, thank you.
Uh, my name is Debbie Jones, and I'm the executive director of the Chippewa County Community Foundation. And I'm just here to, um, give our support of the project. The community foundation has been working with the community, the, um, CHN for it's probably been a little over a year now. We were going to partner with them on the Malcolm Lofts project. Um, and then that didn't go through, but at this point, the community foundation will be investing three hundred thousand dollars into this project as a loan to CHN and sharing in the, um, the development fees. Those development fees will allow us to do additional work within the community, so I'm here to say that we support it. Um, CHN also happened to donate a thousand dollars just tonight to a splash pad, along with CJ Fulton and his wife personally donating a hundred dollars. So the community foundation is in support of the project.
Thanks, Debbie, good comments. Uh, Justin Effer? Your comments around two also? Thank you. You have a minute and a half?
Of course. First, I really, uh, understand, um, Susan's comments, and, uh, I only wanted to offer a few qualitative things that are happening for the commission's, uh, I guess, interest. Uh, since our Water Group project has come underway, as well as the second childhood project, the Kalia project, I am getting a crazy amount of calls, um, in, in part due to I think just the downtown Facebook page sharing some of the updated construction. Today, I got a call from a lady in Green Bay who's two children, uh, just live down by the Lockview Restaurant, and she's, uh, retired, wanting to move up and was asking specifically about some of the affordable housing projects and where to move. I got a call from, uh, one of the former owners of the American Cafe from twenty years ago, asking about moving back from Grand Rapids. Uh, there's a weird amount, uh, like literally two or three a week of people calling the DDA office, the chambers referring, people saying, those look like really neat apartments. And, and I think a lot of it just has to do with a little bit of publicity and a little bit of advertising, I suppose, that's going on because of new projects and perhaps many of the housing projects that are, are, I'm sorry, housing, um, units that are available, maybe it's just more advertising that needs to happen to give people some understanding, but there's a lot of, uh, interesting, interesting movement out there with people that want to come back. Uh, people that are especially retired and maybe do not have a lot of, uh, uh, money, at least from a qualitative standpoint, so that's something of interest to me. The other thing, of course, uh, many of us have gone to different trainings regarding the missing middle of housing. Garfield comments is, uh, within walking distance, I'm sorry, Garfield Landing, uh, is within walking distance of the downtown. Um, there's, I, I was in, um, one of the restaurants downtown the other day, and the first thing that happened was one of the restaurant workers uh, grabbed me and said, I, how do I get an application to move into one of these downtown apartments? Uh, I have a, I'm a single dad, I got a, a young daughter, and, um, I want to move closer. So there's definitely a lot of interest, I think, um, the biggest thing that I would love for us to do is consider how do we engage our populations and our communities, especially lower-income communities, so they're not just islands unto themselves, and they get wrapped into the community and, and get engaged. And, um, my one, uh, comment regarding the splash pad on that is, as we increase density for housing, we need to offer amenities for people that are moving here. And that's something to keep in mind, is to make sure that, that our, that our amenities are up to date and modern, and that we are, you know, really budgeting for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Justin, good comments. Uh, Brandon LaJoy? Is number two the item you'd like to speak on?
Thank you. Hello there. I'm a longtime resident of, uh, a motherhouse just across the street from the, uh, Garfield Schoolhouse, five thirty-three East Screw Street. And, uh, since I was just starting high school, I've sat across that street and watched this building go unused year after year after year. And I think it is a, uh, tragedy that such a, a building could remain vacant when, uh, there is potential for it to be put toward a public good for the city. Uh, in a spot that especially in its location would allow for, uh, greater engagement with the community, as I had the, uh, option to, living just across the street in the exact same spot, uh, perfect distance to the sporting fields downtown, as was previously mentioned. You can get to pretty much any, uh, public service you would want to in the city from there, even on foot, so. Uh, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, good comments as well. Mark Van Dorn?
Good evening, everyone, Mark Van Dorn, Fresh Waters Real Estate Advisors. I represent Lisa Corbier on the, uh, potential sale of the building. I was going to give you a little I was gonna give you a little bit of perspective on the rezoning history with Lisa, but I think Mr. Freeman did a good job of that. What I do wanna tell you, though, is I've had this property listed for over two years and have had zero realistic inquiries, uh, up till now. Uh, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Good comment. And, uh, keeping in mind that the only thing that we are looking for action on is to, uh, rezone the, uh, former Garfield School site. So any other questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Collins' comment? Thank you.
So, just to clarify, we're not talking about any variances at this point, we're just talking about rezoning it?
City manager.
Correct.
Commissioner Baker, did you have a question?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Collins?
Motion to approve the included ordinance to rezone the former Garfield School site, parcel number 051686001-00, from B1, local business to RM2, multiple-family residential, and schedule a second reading of the ordinance for March 15, 2020, city commission meeting.
Report.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Thank you very much. Under G, business items, number three, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commission consideration is a request for a pilot from CNH regarding the Garfield Landing Project over at the former Garfield School property. Um, included in the packet tonight is the proposed pilot, as well as supplementary information on the proposed layout, the MSA, and the gar-gar-gi, and, uh, another document?
Guarantee.
Sure. Guarantee. Real cool, right? Um, staff's recommendation tonight is solely to schedule the public hearing for future consideration. We would look for a motion to approve first reading and schedule a second meeting, or second hearing, for March 16, 2020.
Thank you for the information. Any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Collins?
Is there any variance requests in this? No, sir. Okay. Thank you.
All right. And we have, uh, some questions from the audience. Sarah Cersei, do you have a question or comment on, if you, please come to the microphone and state your name for the record?
Sarah Cersei. Do I get to, I just get to talk?
Three minutes. Yep.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, okay. Uh, once again, I'm Sarah Cersei, still live at 535 East Screw. Um, my comments are mostly about, um, that I do not believe at this time that the Sioux area is in need of more affordable low-income housing. I believe that the Sioux is in need of housing so that it will become affordable. Um, this belief is based off basic supply and demand principles. High housing rates transfer wealth from the bottom to the top because having a place to live is essential. Housing is a need and not a want. Since it is a need, landlords can charge rent at whatever they see fit, and people will have to pay it because they need a place to live. The demand is obviously there. However, creating, creating more housing would make resources more abundant and allow for a lower rent across the board, as long, as landlords would have to lower rental prices to stay competitive, to attract renters. Creating more affordable housing offsets this potential balance because it lowers demand for market-based rent, thus shifting the pendulum to keep market-based rent higher. I believe that the building of the Garfield Commons would hinder not just the property, but the neighborhood for future development. Low-income housing generally concentrates together welfare-dependent families, and while I certainly mean no offense, that is a presence that is generally taken negatively. A 2016 study, Who Wants Affordable Housing in Their Backyard: An Equilibrium Analysis of Low-Income Development, reported that low-income housing can negatively impact a neighborhood depending upon quality of design, management, and concentration. A high concentration of low-income housing can cause the fear of an actual increase of criminal activity and depreciation of property value, along with concern of excessive traffic and parking problems. Another issue I have with this project is the funding. It will be built and paid for by federal funds. For 10-plus years, the developers will receive increased process, profits with decreased tax liability. After this, the funds will be washed, the funds that washed in will be washed out, and they will no longer gain new federal funds and be left to figure out how to care for this building, for upgrades and maintenance, out of their own pockets, or go back to get more grant money. What funds will pay for this? What will happen to the current tenants after the affordable income time comes to an end? Will they be forced out to walk away for higher-paying renters? I think it is easy to look at this project and think that, on the surface, it looks great for our community, but I do not feel like, when looked deeper, it is as good as our community, as good for our community. It is good for the developers' pockets, but does that mean it's good for our people? A short-term gain is not worth long-term pain. Sioux St. Marie and their people deserve better than that.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate your organized and thoughtful comments. Uh, Debbie Jones, did you have any comments on item three?
I'll just make, uh, one comment and state that the residents, um, are not welfare recipients, and that they are, this is more of a workforce housing as opposed to low-income. They do have to have an income in order to be able to pay the rent, so, um, I'd like it to be, I think, I think of it as workforce housing as opposed to low-income housing. I do serve on the Sioux Housing Commission, um, and there is somewhat of a difference between low-income housing and housing that's subsidized by HUD in this project. This project is more funded through tax credits.
Thank you, Debbie. Uh, Justin Eppert, did you have any comments on this? Uh, Brandon LaJoy, did you have any comments on three? Or Mark Van Doren? I'm gonna call on them after we're done with, uh, yep. Thank you. And, thanks, Mark. We'd be remiss if we didn't introduce CJ Felton and Al Martin, who, uh, represent the, uh, project, and, uh, I'm sure we'll have a couple of comments before we deliberate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. This is our fourth trip here in the last 15 days. And the weather's a lot better than it was last week.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, Mishna has made some changes to, uh, this program that allows us to house some higher-income people than we used to be able to. It used to be capped at 60% of the area median income. We can now have up to 80% area median income households, as long as we average 60% rent. So just to give you an idea, here in Chippewa County, the, uh, three-person household, so that would likely be a, a couple with a child living in a two-bedroom apartment, can earn up to $44,000 a year to, and still be eligible to live here, and that two-bedroom apartment rent, right now, is slotted at $972 a month. Um, we actually think our market study will come back and tell us that we may need to reduce that, um, 'cause it's probably not quite realistic in this town. Now, your market, most of your market rents are not there at this, at this time. Couple other things really quick before I go through the pilot. Um, just wanted to set a couple of things straight. We love, Sarah, love your comments. We, we love working cities where the residents are engaged and passionate. Um, those are, those are the most vibrant communities, they're good places to live and work, and we appreciate that. There are no federal funds in this development. These are private, it, the tax credit program is, is made possible by selling those tax credits to private equity investors. In most cases, it's a bank, and we have people that are very interested in investing in tax credits in Sioux St. Marie. Um, we also have a 45, we make a commitment at the time of application to keep these units affordable for 45 years. So what'll likely happen after the first 15-year compliances period is up is we'll just resyndicate that and keep the development and community moving forward as it has in the past. Um, a couple of very quick comments on the pilot. Uh, this property is generating some tax revenue today. Believe the 2019 summer-winter taxes added up to just a little over $4,000. The city retains about $1,500, al-almost $1,600 after you share with the other taxing entities. The proposal that we're putting in front of you has the city retaining $12,000 through the 7% pilot, 7% collected on the net shelter rents, and then we are also committing a $7,000 mutual, committing two of $7,000 mutual services agreement, of which you retain all of that. You don't have to share that with, uh, with the other taxing partners. So in the end, it results in about a $10,400 increase over what the property is currently generating, and I would imagine, has, it's been like that for the last 30 years, I would think, since the late 70s. So, it's, uh, w-we think that that's very equitable solution and raises some additional tax revenue for the city. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, CJ. Uh, Commissioner Collins?
So when you say resyndicate after 15 years, you basically are saying that you're gonna refinance after 15 years?
There's a lot of different things we can do, but we've committed, we could own it and operate it if it's in great shape and we're, and we're able to maintain the place. Still, with the funds that we have, we, we can do that.
And at that point, it goes on the tax rolls as an entity, it comes off the pilot program, correct?
We, we might come back and talk to you again, um, because if it needs to be applied for, it's really hard to say what that program might look like 15 years from now. I suspect that things evolve, it could be very different than it is today, but, um, lots of different options at year 15, but all of them result in that place not turning into Barker 800.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Baker?
I just have, uh, a few comments regarding, um, this whole project. Uh, as now a newly renter, I've had the pleasure of going out and, um, looking for a rental as I would call myself a, um, middle-class, not on the lower level, but not on the high level either, uh, pers-person, uh, family, and it is a rough, rough go, looking for a place that is, um, I guess what I would call a professional that would wanna live in, not a college student. Lots of college student places, I would've no problem live there, but not with my son and whatnot. Um, I also feel like with evolving as a community, we really need to look at, um, the younger generation, and the fact that, and we've talked about this in a, a ton of our seminars and meetings of rockability, and kid, younger kids, they don't want the cars, they can't afford the insurance, they wanna be closer to town, and there is nothing, nothing really downtown, um, or in that area for the, those mid-level, um, families. So that's why I'm in support of the project, um, to...
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Any questions for CJ, Commissioner Baker, Tordy?
Thank you. Yeah, first, yeah, did you, uh, first just a question and then a comment. So, originally, when you were buying Malcolm School, you were pitching it as a senior-living, um, environment. Now, what's, what's Garfield's plan? Is, it's mixed-use, I understand that, but are you primarily, are you going for senior living, or are you going towards anybody?
The unit makeup will di-help dictate part of that. Uh, we've got 36 units planned, we've got 22 one-bedrooms and 14 two-bedrooms. So realistically, not a lot of families. Um, be perfect for senior living, be perfect for single, um, maybe Abby's family, you and, one, one child or two? Okay, one child, two-bedroom apartment works great, but, um, yes, likely very attractive to seniors close to town. Um, we've anecdotally heard that there's a lot of people that maybe are having a difficult time keeping their homes up, and that might be an attractive situation for somebody to move to rental property. There's also, we understand there are some people from the outlined rural community that might like to move back into town, and that's an option there as well.
But it's not being marketed as senior living?
Well, no, it's not a senior-exclusive community.
Okay. That was my question. Uh, so, I guess just a couple of comments for the commission. That was why I texted you last week, 'cause I knew that you've been having a really hard time trying to find housing, but I also understand the income caps. I think when we were first looking at, well, after I got onto the commission and I was looking at the first pilot pop-project, it was the pilot that I kept getting stuck on. Um, but since then, I've, whenever I'm visiting an urban area, I ask in the urban area, like, what, what is the, what's the professional makeup in your downtown area? And I'll tell you, there's a few cities specifically, and I know we're not Denver, Colorado, uh, and, but I used to live there, so I have a big passion for it. Denver has a very bad problem, where working-class people, because they didn't save space for working-class people, cannot afford to live in the downtown area. But who works in the downtown area? Working-class people. And so all of your bartenders, all of your bellhops, all of your, uh, people who clean hotels, who clean office buildings, who, you know, drive vehicles, none of those people can live in the downtown area because they can't afford 1.2 for a flat. So, I was originally getting really stuck on the pilot. Um, but as I continue to work through government more, I see that, you know, there, we're, the reason that the pilot is there is so that we can allow working-class people to afford to live there and be in our downtown area. We're also not, we're not, you're not fighting for space in Sioux St. Marie. There's a lot of space in Sioux St. Marie. And when we start getting to the point where developers are fighting for space in Sioux St. Marie, I might say no on a pilot. Um, but there's a lot of areas, and while we have the space and how, since we haven't been overdeveloped, I think that it, we're remiss to say no on this project because it has been sitting there vacant. I would hate to stand in the way of Lisa being able to sell this, and I know she really had a great idea two years ago, or four years ago, uh, whatever it was, but that fell through. Um, and I, I don't wanna see this beautiful sandstone building that was part of my childhood, and almost everybody here on this panel, all of our childhoods too. I, I'd hate to see it just crumble into the ground. And I don't, also don't wanna see it turned into a car dealership. So, um, not that I have anything against car dealerships.
Or a gas station.
Or a gas station.
That was one of the uses in, in B1 that Kelly didn't reference.
Right. Or not a body shop. Uh, I would like to see families and working class, even young professionals, who are graduating from Lake Superior State University. I mean, I'd love to keep them in town, but I know that we have, we have a housing crisis with the blighted houses in our community because we have an aging housing population. So, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments to the commission. I'm in favor of it, and I think that they're gonna turn it into a beautiful building.
Thank you, Commissioner Tordy. Uh, Commissioner Collins?
I agree with everything that, um, Mayor Pro Tem Tordy actually said. The one thing that I think, when I look at, like, the pilot programs, is people always use the term low-income housing. To me, when I look at it, I look at it more as affordable housing, because you're taking working-class people that are actually working, they have jobs, right? They're not basically on welfare.
Sure. $44,000 a year.
Right. So they're working, and we're able by, by actually approving this, we're actually allowing or providing them a better-quality housing product than what they could probably get right now in the market, for basically the same amount of money, or maybe a little bit less. But still, I mean, if they're, if they're at that, I'm sure that where you're gonna have the, the unit's price is gonna be pretty similar to what is out there available to them, but they're able to move into a nice apartment downtown and continue working where they're working right now. So, to me, when I look at it from a commission standpoint, I think that's one of the things that we're supposed to do, right? I mean, we wanna be able to provide better housing for our, our, basically, people or our community, right? And this is a wonderful way to do it. And then also, like Mayor Pro Tem Tordy said, yeah, I mean, obviously, if we had other developers coming and fighting over the area, right, we're probably not gonna do a pilot, right? But then, on the other hand, like you said, in 15 years, it might not be a pilot program anymore, and you guys might decide at that point that it's gonna be market rate across the board, if you take over, right?
No. We committed to 45 years of affordability.
Oh, great. See? Thank you very much for that. Okay. But affordability can still be mark, basically, market rate, though, correct?
Depends on where, it depends on where your market goes in the next... Depends on where, it depends on where your market goes in the next fifteen years. I agree with you right now that the tax credit rents that are, can prescribe are actually pretty much right in line with your market rents here in the city. But with some of the things that we think we see happening here, that could change a lot in the next few years.
That is true.
I also gave you one, you make a great point about, we don't like the term low-income housing pro, tax credit program. It, that's, that name should have changed a long time ago. We've, I don't particularly like affordable housing either, because all of us have an affordability range, right? No matter how much you make, there's only so much that makes sense to pay for your housing. I heard a great thing at a conference a few months ago where somebody talked about attainable housing. And that term is since, I've heard it in a couple other places, and it applies a lot to that workforce housing situation where we're, we're at functional zero unemployment in, in most places, and people need to be able to live where, near where they work. If they don't, it's not sustainable, and they're going to go live where the job is and where it works.
I like that, thank you.
Thank you. Lots of great comments, and if I could just make a couple comments to wrap it up. Commissioner Miller, do you have a comment?
I just have one question. When you started your presentation, you mentioned an apartment for three family, someone with three people in their family, two kids, two...
Yep, a two-bedroom apartment.
Forty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. Do you find that affordable? Do you think nine hundred and eighty-two dollars a month for a family of three making forty-four thousand dollars is affordable?
Yeah, it depends on what your definition of affordability is, but realistically, we don't like to see anybody pay over thirty percent of their household income for a house, be it ownership or rent. If you get above that, you're in trouble. So this suggests that you can get there, but it probably is still not reality with your market here.
Commissioner Talantino, I want to make a comment, and then we'll wrap it up.
Thank you, Your Honor. My questions are actually not for you, sir, but actually more commission administrative questions. I've obtained a copy of the February two thousand fourteen market analysis. Is this the only one that we in the city of Sioux St. Marie have and are use?
Currently, yes, sir.
All right, I got a couple of quick questions about this. When we as commissioners are given this information, we're basically reading this and making decisions for our city by these reports, correct?
Correct.
Why was Sioux Housing at two hundred and sixty units left out of this report? Does, can anybody answer that question for me? Plus Sioux Housing also has fifty vouchers and a thirty-seventy program. Why were they left out of this report back in two thousand fourteen? I would like an answer for that, please, somebody.
DDA Director?
Justin Nepper, DDA Director, is heading to the podium to talk about, is that the market rate study?
This was the market, this was the analyst of residential market potential by Zimmerman Volk in February two thousand fourteen.
In, I'm sorry, Justin Nepper, Sioux St. Marie Downtown Development Authority. In two thousand fourteen, we were approached by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for a special grant program that they had offered, which was a fifty thousand dollar, no, I'm sorry, a twenty thousand dollar grant to hire a consultant that MISTHA had kind of on a shortlist, if you will. Zimmerman Volk was one, there's a few others. We, we reviewed the various proposals, chosen Zimmerman Volk. My role in it was to bring Zimmerman Volk to all the various parties that had anything to do with housing. So in two thousand fourteen, we spent over, I don't know, probably two weeks visiting a tremendous amount of housing, kind of administrators, everything from Lake State Student Life to talk about university housing needs to Sioux Housing. We met with Linda Ford, Linda... She's no, Linda LaFord at the time, there on Pine Street. We met with various property owners, various developers, and then city people, city staff. And mostly, all I did was connect the Zimmerman Volk team to people and went with them on a few meetings because I was fairly new and wanted to see what it was like. But I can't answer why they left that out, other than I remember sitting specifically with Sioux Housing and with Linda LaFord and Zimmerman Volk asking a number of detailed questions. And my understanding of that report was when they completed the report, it really focused in on, actually, I do recall the answer now that I recollect. The way that the city and the Downtown Development Authority at the time was investigating, we were specifically, we really wanted market rate housing in the community, and we asked Zimmerman Volk to concentrate on the need for market rate housing, not on the need for all, all types of housing. So they were, I remember them talking to, to Linda LaFord, but their, their focus was specifically on how many market rate units going to bring to the community without reaching a saturation point. So the affordable, affordability level of housing in the community was not directly attached to that report.
Actually, it was. Looking at the summary of selected rental properties, Avery Square, twenty-nine income restriction, Wood Creek, all income restriction, Wood Creek Manor, all income restriction, Bridge Village, all income restriction. I don't think we did the city due diligence with this report. This report is no good as far as I'm concerned. Why would we leave out that many units to try to come to a consensus of what we need? To me, that just makes absolutely no sense. This is an inaccurate report as far as I'm concerned because we're missing out units.
As in, it doesn't mention any federal housing? Is that what you're saying?
Well, federal housing is what, is what we're talking about here. Yep, Sioux Housing is what I'm specifically talking. That's housing for people in our community, correct? Is it, is it or is it not?
I believe it's federally owned housing with different restrictions than federally funded.
That's fine, but our residents can live there. Why wasn't one of our largest buildings taken into consideration in this report? I, I just, I, I find that mind-boggling, and I just don't know why it, it wasn't taken into consideration.
I will say, if I go back in time, considering the fact that we had zero financial involvement in the report, and it was, to be frank, a MISTHA grant saying, here's your consultant, here's your report, now go build housing, there was limited investigative work done, I guess, from the community. We were just happy to have the report fully funded by MISTHA at the time, and it helped us, you know, work towards a, a number of rental rehab projects and a number of other housing projects. But I certainly understand what you're saying, and I, I certainly would look more closely at it at the time.
I think we need to take a really good, close look at this, you know, because this is a report back from two thousand and fourteen, and it's leaving out all those units. And we as commissioners, when we get these reports, we make our decisions based off of what we see in these reports. And if they're inaccurate, man, I don't know. I'm not ready to do anything with this after looking at this report. I think every commissioner needs to take a look at this and take a good, strong look at the validity of this so-called market report. We need to take a look at it.
Thank you Commissioner Collins. Or Commissioner Talantino. Are we hitting close to wrapping this up? Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just want to make a few points. One, from what I've seen out there, most two-bedrooms to three-bedrooms run anywhere between eight hundred and ninety, nine hundred dollars a month. And some of those are in very, very, very poor condition. I've always been interested in, at a, with Sioux Housing as far as the makeup of it and how it works, and I get the strategic layout of Sioux Housing back in the day with the schools, but now families are smaller, McKinley School is closed and so forth. I know people that were in Sioux Housing paying eight hundred dollars to live behind the athletic field in the oldest of the old buildings. Now, to me, by allowing projects like the WODA and the Garfield Commons Project, it brings in new development, a brand-new building at the same price, and I think, you know, places like Sioux Housing, they might need to look at their long-term plan and reevaluate their housing structure and updates and things like that. And again, the reiterating that it's, you know, based off your income too and not low-income.
Thank you Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Collins, did you have another comment?
Well, I was just going to say that we had a report that was given to us before the act, the development actually went in behind Maloney's, and there was a presentation at the Ramada Inn or the Ojibwe, right? You were there, right? And that actually had probably more accurate data than that report that you have, have right there. My only response to, I can see Commissioner Talantino's frustration with that report, but I'm not going to put my hat on anything that was generated basically five years ago. I mean, the market changes and things change so much, so I wouldn't hold any water on that basically report. Basically, in my opinion, and the reason for that, the reason that I say that is, is that it wasn't something that was actually administered by the city per se, right? That was something that was given to the DDA, and that report actually, the way I understand it, helped us to apply for some of the grants that helped us to do what we needed to do downtown. So basically, that allowed us to get basically what we needed to get done for grant writing purposes. It's not necessarily something that you would use for a planning document. That's just my few cents on that.
Thank you Commissioner Collins, and I just have a few comments. And you hit the nail on the head. That report was done strictly to find out if there was a demand for market rentals downtown, has nothing to do with this report, or with this transaction, had nothing to do with any of the prior pilot transactions as well. Right here, we have CHN, their private investor, and they're, they're bringing outside capital as Sioux St. Marie, they've been attracted here, and they like the assets that we have, and, and their first project didn't work out because, you know, some issues with the, the seller and their deal, and, and they found a arms-length transaction with, with a person that owns a piece of property in, in Sioux St. Marie. There's been no undue influence, and they're following all the rules. And they had an issue on the agenda tonight to have it rezoned, and that passed unanimously. I'm assuming the other issues that they were looking for have passed with their respective committees. And in addition, they have made a promise, it doesn't apply to this transaction, but they made a promise and a commitment to Sioux St. Marie that they would take their fees when awarded the financing and buy a building downtown across from the former Burger King and two buildings, and they're going to do some mixed-use development, and that's going to include some retail, it's going to include some more market rate apartments for Sioux St. Marie, and that will complete that block. I think the Sandersons have picked up one of those buildings, and then we have a really great eating facility in, in tavern. And so that will do a lot for our downtown. They're, they're committing to our city and, and digging in. They do have a proven record. CHN is, I think as they've told us, very, I can't remember the number of units you said you've developed, but it was a lot, probably more than we have in the city of Sioux St. Marie. And so they're looking at other investments. So I for one think, and, and when you talk about the pilot ordinance, I know that everybody gets a little skittish, we have nine housing pilots in the city of Sioux St. Marie right now. And of those, the percentage here on their agreement is higher than six. It's lower than only three, but they will be only the second one that we have required, required a municipal services agreement, and that's seven thousand dollars that comes directly to us for municipal services, and there are no other taxing authorities that receive any of that money, so that's like receiving a heck of a lot more. I mean, you all know that of your city tax bill, if you pay a thousand dollars, only about four hundred bucks of that comes to the city of Sioux St. Marie, the rest goes to other units. So seven thousand dollars directly into the pot, plus the addition of the twelve thousand dollars, I think you said it was, that comes from the pilot revenue, will make for a much higher, or a higher pilot than, than is typical with what we've granted before. And if I remember correctly, this is only the second time we have required, and it's something we've been requiring going forward, a actual corporate guarantee of this pilot. So the last one was the WODA project that we talked about, so none of the others had that required. So they've complied with everything we've asked for, we have a pilot ordinance that we have not changed, tweaked, or done anything for, and so they're abiding by that. So in my opinion, we have an obligation to go forward, so. We'd be certainly looking for any more questions or comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the included ordinance and return the ordinance to the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting for consideration and action.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Miller, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say something that you said in your comments, Your Honor. When I voted to resolve the form of Garfield School, I was for, I did it for Ms. Corbier, not for anyone else. You mentioned, you mentioned, yeah, you mentioned them. I didn't do it for them, I did it for Ms. Corbier.
And questions or comments? The move is supported? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talantino?
No.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. On G, business items, number four, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commission consideration, there's a receipt and budget for a DDA match on main grant. Here to give a little more information is DDA Director Nepper. Do you have any questions for it? The short and long is the DDA applied for and was awarded a Michigan match on main grant for Heritage Outdoors. The grant amount is for twenty-five thousand dollars for remodeling costs to pass through. Basically, it goes through the DDA to the property owner. This program, we need two motions, a motion to approve the budget, the amount of twenty-five thousand, a motion to approve a budget revision of twenty-five thousand. So if there's any questions, DDA Administrator Justin Nepper, is he able to answer?
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Twardy?
Just for clarification from the city attorney, Harmony Health Foods was one of the requesting properties of this grant. We did not receive it, we were not awarded, but I just wanted to get that out in the open, should I abstain from any discussion?
No, losers have to vote.
Thanks a lot. I like to say I just didn't receive the award. Thank you.
Yikes, any other questions or comments? Any questions for Justin Nepper? Commissioner Twardy, would you like to make the motion, being on the end of that?
Yeah, I know, but I am very excited for the Sandersons. They, they have been working diligently in the city of Sioux St. Marie. So two motions, right? I will make a motion to approve a budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, the match on main Heritage Outdoors project.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments from the commission? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy, the second motion. Trying to go slow so you can catch up.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget revision of twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue and expense for the DDA budget.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes. Thank you, motion passed. And I know it sounds silly, but I'd like to make an announcement that we apologize, our audio is not working for the people at home, so if you are in the audience, you're hearing us, and we are taping it, so it will be made available on rebroadcast with sound so you can join the party. So we apologize for the technical difficulties. They can't hear that anyway. So under H, city manager announcements and updates.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of updates for everyone, a couple of script here. The sound is down. We will get that back up and record, we're going to record and upload as soon as we can. End of the month here is going to be, what? Oh, it's just on YouTube. Sorry, YouTube. So, end of the month, we're coming up on census date. It's super important for everyone to get out, start filling out those applications. Census equals money for us from the federal government, so census needs to be the forethought of everyone, and we will push that in the city and on our radio shows and all that stuff coming up. We have a tentative offer with a... stuff coming up. We have a tentative offer with a civil engineer. Hopefully, we can finish that up here in the next couple of days. Update on the Nineteenth Street Condition Resolution. As the commission was aware, there was an email request from several residents on Nineteenth Street. That's the road over by Taco Bell. It is in terrible, terrible condition. We're going to put in about forty grand of budget to try to do a shape, a crush shape, and asphalt there. Real thin Band-Aid. There's some sand, or there's some storm sewer structures going underneath of it. That project's not for another three years or so. We were trying to hold out for that project, but that road is just in no condition at all the way through longer. So, we're going to do a timber Band-Aid on that, and like I said, just crush and shape it, and then a little thin asphalt on top of it just to make it pass. So, that is all I have for Commissioner.
Thank you, city manager. That road certainly is bad shape, and we've seen a lot of comments on social media, and we've heard from some of the residents on that street. And certainly, I think that's a good option to override and recoat that, and that'll get us through until we have to do the major unearthing. So, moving on to matters presented by the public, is there anybody in the public that would, that's left, that would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, no. Chief Riley, please come to the podium. Police Chief John Riley has some comments for us. Welcome, welcome to the podium.
I read one here, and I believe the city manager from email about city manager also got this information after I forwarded it to him as well. I received an email last week from an organization, National Council for Home Safety and Security, and I think they have something to do with alarms. And out of, over almost thirty-four hundred municipality police departments in the state of Michigan with populations of over ten thousand, what they do is they go through FBI statistics that are reported to the FBI from the municipalities, and they rate the communities. Out of almost thirty-four hundred, we rated number fifty-five. And that's pretty good for that size of a group, and the population's of over ten thousand. So, I just want to let you know, they sent us that, and I'm going to request that we get it on the city website as well as the police website. And all they ask for is a link to their website, and I went on that, it's the report, lists all these communities. So, good job.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much, chief. So, one of the safest cities in Michigan is ranked top one hundred. Excellent. Anybody else in the audience that would like to make any comments? Moving on to the city commission, any matters presented by the city commission? Commissioner Torri, Mayor Protem Torri.
Thank you, thank you. This is just a PSA comment. I've had several requests, and I know that it is that time of year where the snow is melting and it is uncovering unearthly sites, and some of those would be dog excrements. So, lots of requests from people to please remind residents that they are to pick up their dog poop. There are several places downtown where we have baggies that you can use, and then you can deposit them into city trash receptacles where they are available. So, especially in the downtown area. So, just please, and one of the things that it does do, if you don't clean it up, is it brings in horrible animals such as rats. So, please reminding people to pick up their dog poo when they're walking their animals. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Riley, did you have a comment?
Are all the baggies the same size, or some worse? Are there some worse-sized ones? Or are they all the same size?
Commissioner Collins, you have your, okay, Commissioner Baker?
Just a few comments. One, I want to comment on the AmeriCorps. People that were here earlier and just saying what an awesome program AmeriCorps is. I was in AmeriCorps Vista as well. It's a great opportunity, not only for seniors, but for people just getting out of high school and going to college. They do pay back student loans. I would still be in AmeriCorps Vista if I get a little bit more instead of just in the stipend, but it's a great program and a great way to get involved in your communities. So, kudos to those that get involved. Also, just a little PSA for the Yak students. They're putting on a scavenger hunt for kids during the day from two to four on the twenty-first, and then adults start at six. It's going to be a fun, all-located downtown. And they're also throwing the Throwback Program. April twenty-fifth, you can get tickets at the animal shelter or at Maloney's. That'll be down at the Armory, and half the proceeds that will go to the animal shelters as well, so.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Collins?
Two things. So, the first thing I was thinking is the young lady that did the presentation for it, the splash pad. I definitely don't want her to feel discouraged in any way, shape, or form. I think that we're, well, I'm in favor of the splash pad. I would just hope that, and I don't know if I can suggest this, but work with the administration to work through our CIP program and the budget process and get that into basically the correct procedures to get that funded and get it approved. So, that was just a comment. I didn't want you to feel discouraged in any way, shape, or form. I think you did a phenomenal job in your presentation. The second thing is, is that I've heard from a few citizens, which is kind of ironic because we've talked about this before, about possibly having an events manager at the Polar Building. So, I know that we've talked about it, and that we've got some plans in place with that, so I just kind of wanted to make sure the city manager was aware of that and that we're, that we are, I am getting comments on that, that they think that that's something that should be there. And I'm basically letting them know that we've talked about it and that we're kind of working towards that direction.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the city commission? Commissioner Torri?
Move to adjourn.
The move is supported. Don't favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.